Okay, in compliance with chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice has been given to all members of the governing body, the local source and the Westfield leader. The two newspapers designated to receive such notices. Notice is also posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board. Official action may be taken tonight. I actually think we do have one resolution we might be passing tonight. But start though with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One day under God indivisible. With liberty, justice, and.
Okay, so the first one is the authorization to apply for the Community Development Block Grant.
Can you roll call first, Matt?
Oh, so let the record reflect that all members of council are here, including John Post is also here. Martha, Kim Moriyak, Frank Mocella, I believe Joe, it says connecting to audio, but I think he is connected. Joe, you're connected? Okay, I'm on the phone. Okay, Matt Deanna is also on and Jill Good and oh yeah, Glenn Mortimer too.
One of these days, you'll get me.
Okay, so the first one is the authorization to apply for the Community Development Block Grant 47. Martha, is that you?
It's that. Um, Kim can speak on that one. Kim unmute yourself.
Yes, um, this is the community block grant that, um, we, we apply for each year and we use that money towards my salary and also the transportation salary of the, uh, the van drivers. This is going to be a little bit of a different year because they're doing everything online. They're going to try, so they're in the process of setting that up. The grant is going to be due the week of.
The week of when, Kim? I couldn't hear you yet.
December 6.
And how much are we applying for? We just put the programs in and they give us what they want to give us?
Right. We request usually 25. We are, this past year was 10, well, this coming year is $10,750.
That was for 2020?
2020, 21. It goes from September through July, or I'm sorry, August 21.
Okay, and so that's what, so we're applying, so we already passed last year's.
We're in the process of, we just started a new year. This is for a year ahead, this, uh, application. So the application will go in December, the week of December 6, and that will run from September 21 through July 22.
August 22.
Sorry, August 22. Yeah, I've got the alliance on my, on my brain. I apologize.
Okay, so anybody have any questions of Kim about that?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so next we have cancellation of tax. Looks like a duplicate payment, Jill. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, uh, the assessor had a block and lot duplicated in the tax, uh, file, you know, in the mod four system. So, uh, the property was built twice for taxes where it should have only been built once. So I, I was talking to the auditor and would just do cancel the duplicate bill and the taxes.
Any questions on that, guys?
No.
Okay, so department refunds. It looks like there's two.
Yeah, I booked, oh, good.
There's two for recreation.
Right.
Tennis clinic and a micro soccer that they canceled. And then there's also a request from the construction official, Jerry Eager, who, um, wants to refund for, um, a permit for basement renovations that the homeowner has changed their mind about doing. So that would be for 262 Holly Hill for $880.80.
Any questions on that?
No.
I think I'm gonna skip Halloween and do that at the end till we get through the other items on the agenda. Anyone have a problem with that? It's probably gonna be the most we're gonna talk about. Next is senior programs. I guess that's, Kim?
Uh, well, what had happened was some council members wanted to have a joint expanded, uh, recreation senior liaison, a meeting regarding the senior programs. Uh, that would of course necessitated a public meeting, so it was decided amongst everybody here that it would be done in a work session and, uh, people could ask questions of Kim about the senior programs and the status thereof and the opinions that, that the council may have on these programs.
Is there overlap with the senior programs and recreation? Is that why we're doing it together?
There's somewhat. Most of the programs are run under the auspices, not most, but some are run in conjunction with recreation.
Okay. All right, so, so, Kim, I guess you're gonna up, update us on what the programs are?
Yeah, sure. Um, does anyone have any specific questions before I start? Okay, um, we are currently offering a outside chair yoga class that is, um, uh, 17 seniors. We have spaced it apart. It's at the basketball court over at the pool. Um, it seems to be working out well. Uh, we moved chairs out from the pool area and we, um, have them marked spaced apart. Um, the seniors have any kind of supplies they want. We wipe down the chairs. They have a Purell there if they need it. And they wear their masks when they arrive and once they sit down, they are able to remove their masks. Um, we have ran this two times. Uh, last Tuesday it ran, it rained, so we did not run it. Um, with Thursdays, we offer a bar class. It is 11, uh, seniors that are participating right now. Um, we have done it two weeks in a row. It's run well, same way. We use chairs. They stand and sit in that class and, um, that's good feedback that's coming back from that one. And then on the past two Fridays, we have run Bingo. Each Friday is between 15 and 16 people attending. It is over at the, um, Pavilion, right by the, uh, baseball field. And that one, um, they've requested it two weeks in a row. So this week we're gonna take off and we're gonna figure out a plan to do something craft or some kind of, or some program as such. Um, so for the seniors, I think this is a really important mental health and physical health. Uh, the programs that we've started, we plan on running them as long as the weather permits and, um, it's benefiting them, I can tell. So, anyone have any questions?
I was seeing you, the Zoom meetings you're running, Kim.
Yes, we're doing the Zoom meetings. They're going well. We do them every Thursday. Um, Glenn is going to pop in the meeting on, uh, Thursday this week. Um, and that's going well. We have about nine, uh, participants in that. So we don't have a lot of Zoom. It goes out to 35 emails, but only nine are participating. We don't get a lot of participation in the Zoom programs. And also, um, one added note, um, the, during the last Bingo, I did have, the seniors wanted to speak to the police. They always have questions about what's going on. And, um, the officers came over, discussed some programs, discussed the scams, um, discussed their schedules and how it works for them on, um, you know, when you see, when you expect to see different shifts and how that correlates. So it was a very, um, productive discussion. Any other questions? Okay.
Can maybe provide status on the senior meals, how that's going?
Absolutely. Um, the meals, we are at 7,697 meals. Um, that is, actually has, has that number has actually been delivered to the seniors in their homes. Um, we are, I was thinking about, um, getting more volunteers and one of the uh, thoughts I had was to ask the high school students since they're going to be possibly needing, um, letters of recommend, uh, letters saying that they volunteered a number of hours. I have, um, three right now currently that are in high school that are driving for the, uh, the meals. So I plan to expand that as well and offer that to other, uh, students.
It's still, it's still, still three times a week?
It is three times a week and tomorrow is, uh, 97 meals that will be delivered to seniors.
From where?
Uh, Zappio's in Summit. Yeah, he lives in Mountainside.
Is it so, is it about 90 every week? Is that pretty much 90 each time, Kim? Or is it more or less?
Um, it depends, but it's about, I would say between 80 and 90 we get, um, per time. You know, we had a, we had 110 or 100, I'm sorry, 100 last week from Crohn's. So he was very thankful for that. The scene, the restaurants are very thankful. They call me. They actually call me to ask me, can they provide a meal? So it's.
I'm just curious, the restaurants that you are, um, dealing with, Kim, do they have delivery services? Or is it just DoorDash right now for them?
I know, uh, most of them don't have it. I think it's, um, they don't have enough staff, but like Crohn's definitely doesn't have delivery. Um, and I'm using all of Mountainside, so, um, Vavella's, you know, Spanish Tavern, they, they don't have delivery. Stage House.
And is, is this open to the community or just the seniors? And do you know the, if you have the difference between just delivering to seniors? Or are there other, um, families that are, um, are being able to, this is being offered to?
It is specifically seniors only. Yeah. Um, so I think the age range is at least like 62 and up. Um, most of them are my elderly seniors that don't get out. They're the ones who are really participating in this. You know, 90-year-olds and such, between 80 and 90-year-olds.
Good.
And how long do you plan on doing this? How long do you plan on running this program? Paul, what, what would you say?
Uh, I, right now, I think we're gonna continue it until, well, you know, this crisis is over. I mean, we're getting, I get emails almost every other day from seniors that will thank us for the, uh, program. Uh, I also get stopped, uh, especially in church, from some of the people in church that think it's a, uh, fantastic, uh, program. I think it's, uh, goodwill for the, uh, for the town. Uh, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, uh, continue it. Uh, possibly when we get the senior van up, maybe we can look at it at that point. But at this time, I think, uh, we're gonna continue it.
Is there, is, is there any reason to get rid of it? Because I can't think of any.
Well, if you're 80 and 90 years old, some of that food is a lot too rich for some of these elderly people.
But isn't, depending on.
Decision.
Depending on the resident, uh, it, you know, that could be the only decent meal that they're getting during the week as well.
That's, that's in a lot of the letters that I received. Uh, it's, they appreciate it because it is one of the best meals that they have uh, on a, on a weekly basis. You know, if there's some concerns that, you know, it's too rich, and then we talked about this on Monday with, uh, uh, with Rachel, if you wanna, uh, put together some kind of, you know, nice notice that says, you know, uh, uh, you might wanna consult with your doctor, the food, it maybe is a little rich, uh, uh, we don't wanna, you know, harm anyone's health. Uh, and that's something that we could, you know, deliver with the meals at some point. So if somebody wants to, uh, uh, put together some kind of a letter, we certainly don't wanna, uh, we don't wanna make sure that the, the residents, the seniors are healthy, but like, I think it was Bob said, they gotta make their own, they're making their own decision. You know, we can't act as a big brother, but, uh, and I don't get any of that in any of the emails that people think the, the food is too rich. It's mostly too, they say it's too good.
And, and actually, some of the things I've heard is that the people are saying that the, the restaurants are given a decent amount of food, so they get two meals out of it. Maybe like a dinner and a lunch out of it. So it's, you know, more than one meal for the money. So I think.
I think, um, I think what would be helpful too, Kim, is you're doing this three times a week, at least, um, while you're delivering these. If you give them informational piece like one flyer to let them know that there is still Sage out there available to them and also that other program through Westfields, I don't know if they know about them. And even if they do, it's a reminder, it's good to have that for them. Um, my only concern was taking a job away from delivery people. That's it. And if you're telling me that they don't have, um, delivery people, then.
They don't, not that I know of.
Okay, I mean, but also I think if you give them other information that's available to them, I think it would be helpful, especially Sage.
Are other towns doing this?
No. Not that I'm aware of, I should say. And that's one of the comments. That's one of the comments that you get is that they talk to people in other towns and they wish that, uh, something like this was done in their town, especially people from Westfield and, uh, Scotch Plains.
It is available in Westfield and Scotch Plains. I mean, Sage just got a huge grant to do it. They've partnered with some restaurants. So there are different options for seniors out there in other towns. And that other Westfield, uh, program is also available for the people in Westfield, Mountainside, Scotch Plains. Um, and they do take in dietary considerations. So I think there's a wide variety that's available to seniors who may not want to go out. That's all.
Okay, well, I think for the time being, I think it's a great program. It's goodwill, great goodwill for the town. Uh, so I think we're going to, uh, continue it for now. Uh, any other questions of Kim about any other, that program or any other programs? Okay, so let's go on to the best practices. Inventory review. Jill, I guess that's you and we at 100% yet?
Almost. Uh, we've been, uh, the top grouping every single year that, uh, we do the, um, the program. Uh, this year we have, uh, 22 yeses, six, uh, I'm sorry, three, um, non-applicable and four nos. And a, a couple of the nos are, uh, brand new questions that, um, one of them, you know, uh, is something that will quickly turn into a, uh, yes, but, um, it's difficult when they throw the new questions at you, um, that you, you know, you have to certify exactly what, what's happening in, in the town. Uh, saying that you're allowed up to, uh, eight nos, so we're well within our no range. And, uh, that also means that we will get 100% of our state aid.
Great.
Okay, any questions of Jill about that? Okay, so I guess next is the, uh, review of the, uh,
No.
Noise ordinance.
Nice, skip number seven, mayor.
Oh, uh, we're giving back money. Tax with lien redemption.
Right, that's, uh, that's mine too. So that was, uh, 400 Summit, uh, Summit Road, um, that the house sold. Uh, I've been in contact with the lawyer. Um, I still don't have the redemption money, but I, um, I don't anticipate why I would not get the redemption money because it's been collected already. So, uh, that will be turned over to the town and we'll give that back to the lien holder and then the lien will come off of that property.
Okay.
Okay, so now the noise ordinance.
Glenn, I think you could help us out here.
Sure, I could bring up the impetus behind this. Uh, the Liquid Church has been having, uh, services, uh, every Sunday for the last month and a half now. And at times the volume has been extremely loud. Uh, it was requested by several members of council. We discussed the noise ordinance, which have provided to, uh, all members of council and the mayor. Uh, as it stands now, uh, the ordinance is actually done by the Board of Health. Uh, the situation that brought this about, uh, we will be requesting some assistance from the Westfield Board of Health in measuring the exact decibels that are being, uh, created by the amplified music. I am told by Megan Avalon of, of the Board of Health that the 65 decibels mentioned in our ordinance is basically two people talking relatively loudly at the property line. Uh, as a point of, uh, I, I live near this church myself and if the people across the street are talking loudly in their backyard, I can't hear it in my front yard. However, the, the volume of the music from the services, I can hear inside my house. So, uh, my, uh, my opinion and certainly quite a few of the neighbors over in my part of town uh, believe that this is in excess of 65 decibels. So the Board of Health is going to, uh, help us measure this. Uh, after a little bit of additional history, after the first week this happened, I made a contact at the church. The second week of the services, they toned, they, they made it later in the morning. They toned it down quite a bit. However, the last two weeks, they're back up to, uh, full strength.
I also spoke with.
What's that, mayor?
I also spoke with Megan Avalon, uh, today about that and she's gonna have someone from the Board of Health uh, out on Sunday to measure the decibel levers and if necessary, take whatever enforcement action they deem is necessary. They're the entity that enforces this particular, uh, ordinance. So hopefully we'll, uh, have them out there and we'll get this under control.
At what time is this taking place?
Uh, the services now begin at 9:30. They have a sound check slightly before that. They end approximately noon. The first week they start at 8:00 in the morning.
What is the ordinance? What's the ordinance, sir?
Uh, you, you can, they're fine on the time. Uh, they're after 7:00 in the morning, but the decibel level of 65 i- is where the point of contention would be.
But perhaps Donna can bring this back to the Board of Health and maybe discuss something for Sunday. Uh, maybe we can amend our ordinance, um, to 10 o'clock on Sunday? 10 a.m.?
We could do that now without it going to the Board of Health.
If we could do that, I'd like to consider that then, Keith. Thank you.
And then I, 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 I also was, before the Liquid Church issue came about, um, I, I noticed that there is construction going on uh, at 7:00 in, in the morning. I hear, I see hammers, uh, you know, people banging hammers and I, I, I know these guys wanna get up and, and, and work, but I think 7:00 in the morning and I think that has to do with landscape. Because last Sunday I was walking and somebody was out, you know, mowing lawns at, at 7:00 in the, in the morning. So I, I think we might wanna also consider, uh, uh, increasing or changing the time at which people are allowed to start work to 8:00.
We could do that. Right now, it's, right now it's seven days a week at 7:00 a.m. So during the week, I know when they were working on Mohawk at.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
At quarter to seven, uh, they, when they were doing the sewer construction or, or upgrading the gas lines, whatever it was, they're banging that front end loader at 10 to 7:00 in the morning and it was brutal for a week when they were working out here, but that's midweek. I think on the weekends, we should push it back past 7:00 a.m. Uh, it is a bit much on the weekends.
I think it says that unless I'm reading this ordinance wrong, this doesn't have page numbers, so I apologize. It's under, uh, section. Maybe I'll have to point it out to Glenn later, but it does say, non-commercial, non-industrial power tools and landscaping not to be operated between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Right?
Yeah, what, uh, I wasn't looking at that section earlier, but I did see, I did see that earlier.
Is that on commercial property?
Um, it's, it says non-commercial or non-industrial power tools, uh.
On what kind of property though?
It doesn't say.
I think that's a reference to commercial property.
I'm not sure. There's a lot of different times. There's on another page, it's 7:00 a.m. to 10:00. I'm, I'm not sure. I think this needs to be looked at closer and, yeah.
Yeah, it says non-commercial or non-industrial power tools and landscape and yard maintenance equipment shall not be operated between the hours of 8:00 a.m., between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Unless such activities commit with applicable, uh, limits set forth in the tables above. And that is for.
Really clear.
I think, John, you wanna have your office take a look at this, uh, ordinance for us and see if we can't clean it up?
Thank you.
Yes.
It is very confusing. I, I mean, I've read it multiple times, yeah.
And what time, what time are we recommending on the weekends?
I think Sunday, I think Sunday really would be, in my opinion, 10 a.m.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good, I think Saturdays though, and during the week it should be 8.
Yeah, I think, well, during the week, I think 7:00 o'clock's okay. People, I mean, construction companies, they have to start working at 7:00 in the morning, especially in, in the winter time because they're, they're losing light by 4:30, you know? So I wouldn't say change, I mean, I mean, maybe eight, you know, 8:00 on Saturdays and 10:00 on Sundays. I could see that. But I don't think, you know, 7:00 is not a usual start time for construction, yeah.
I'm just really doing a classic example of them and that was in the middle of the summer, Bob. So they were out there trying to beat the darkness. They were out there so they could get home early.
I think 8:00. I think 8:00 is like the normal, 8:00 a.m. I think would be sufficient for during the week and Saturday and then 10:00 on Sunday.
I agree. So John, your office is gonna look at it because it is confusing if you read it. Yeah, I guess the, the next step would have, have to be, it, uh, does it, does it then have to go to the Board of Health for them to review and make a recommendation before we pass it, John? Is that the normal process?
That would be the protocol, yes.
Okay, all right, so you're gonna work on that and get something to us, please?
I will.
Okay, so outdoor dining. I thought we were actually gonna pass a resolution tonight on that. Is that? I, I got something that said we're passing this tonight.
Yes, Resolution 117, 2020.
Martha, can you read that? We didn't get that out the other package.
You know, because John Post sent it today, so I sent an email today.
Right, I emailed it late in the day. So if you could read it, Martha.
Okay, all right. Whereas on June 2nd, 2020, the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Mountainside adopted Ordinance 1285, 2020, permitting restaurants to utilize temporary outdoor dining areas in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas by its terms, such ordinance shall automatically lapse and have no further legal force or effect on November 1st, 2020, unless the ordinance in further extended on or before such date by resolution of the Borough Council. And whereas the state of emergency and public health emergency declared by Governor Murphy in response to the COVID-19 pandemic continues in effect, now therefore being resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Mountainside that the effective date of Ordinance 1285, 2020 be and the same as hereby extended. Such effective date to continue for so long as the state of emergency and public health emergency declared by Governor Murphy in response to the COVID-19 pandemic continues in effect.
Hey, so, so we wanna make a motion on that?
I think we have to be careful. Before we make a motion on that, I'm seeing, uh, at, at some of the restaurants, some outdoor heating devices being put under tents.
We have a note that will go to every, uh, business in town, uh, similar to the first one, mentioning the, uh, items we spoke about last month, including the heating devices under the tent is not allowed. That's a fire hazard. Uh, the tents are, are tough anyway because they're enclosed, but even the, uh, the, the canopies that they have, uh, have to be snow rated after December.
I thought it was November 1st.
Was that?
Was it, is it November 1st or December 1st, Glenn?
I'm gonna have to double check that. For some reason I thought it was December on the snow and then no, uh, heating under the tent, period, for fire hazard.
John, do you think maybe we should add to the, uh, resolution something to the effect? John, do you think maybe we should add to the resolution, something to the effect that they have to comply with all applicable, you know-
Uniformed construction code requirements.
That, that may apply, that may change due as we get into the winter months, something along those lines?
I think that's built into the ordinance, Paul.
Okay.
In other words, they have to be in compliance. It's also in the reminder letter, and people will have to reapply for the permit. And at that time, our inspectors will go out and inspect again.
So we're gonna deliver this resolution to the restaurants with the letter reminding them of what they have to do?
Yes, Mayor, that's the plan, unless-
Okay.
That's a good idea.
That's perfect.
Okay, so now we got a motion, I believe, and now, and now we have a second? I think, Bob, you made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Keith, you're gonna second it?
Yes.
Okay, Martha, Paul, and council, please.
Councilwoman Andre?
Yes.
Councilman Dirkis?
Yes.
Councilman Messler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're gonna go back to number four, which is Halloween.
So I just want to bring up again, I sent everybody an email on, on probably Monday. The newcomers, Christine from newcomers had calls, and she had a, actually, a good suggestion, and she would like to help move forward with it. They were, they're thinking about having signs where it's going to be trick-or-treating for each home, and it's a fundraiser, so let's just say it's ten dollars a sign. Obviously, when you run out of cans, you could take the sign away. And the, the amounts that, the cost of the signs will be recovered from the fundraiser, and anything left over, they were suggesting to give it to the first responders or Children's Specialized Hospital.
What are the signs gonna say?
And, and basically keeping it traditional trick-or-treating, so it's not focusing on one street, Old Toe. So basically, anybody is, can buy the sign, and if they're interested in having a home, that's going to, you know, be part of trick-or-treating for the children.
Okay, so I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. I think that's a great idea, and I actually spoke to Christine about that today. I think the first issue that we need to address is whether or not we should be closing Old Toe like we have in, in, in previous years. And in looking at all the guidelines from Megan Avalon, and also looking at the guidelines that the governor put out, and I also actually called Jim Debbie today, who, as we all know, lives on Old Toe. And based upon all that, I, I think we should not close Old Toe this year. We, we need to encourage people to trick-or-treat in a traditional fashion. And I think that we should also go through some of the guidelines that we got from Megan Avalon and that the governor put out, and decide what guidelines we want to put out a, as a council. So I, I think everybody has those guidelines, I think. I know, I think Glenn sent them, but everybody should have received them.
Paul, just a quick question?
Yeah.
When you say, have a Halloween in a traditional fashion, you mean the way we've had it in the past at Mountainside? Is that what you mean?
No, where everybody goes, people go door to door, not just on Old Toe. Traditional meaning people who walk around and get candy, and we're gonna talk about how that should be done.
So you're, but then you're saying that we, we don't close Old Toe?
We are not going to close it, no.
Well, I, my only concern is that, and, and maybe the chief can chime in, the police, is that it's a Saturday night, and it, and if people do congregate there, which, you know, this was never really an official town event. It kind of became, and it grew on its own over the course of, I don't know, twenty years, fifteen years, I don't remember. But my, my concern is only that if the roads aren't blocked to vehicle traffic, just regular cut-through vehicle traffic on a Saturday night, that there's gonna be people on that street a lot more than typical streets are, and then they're gonna try to weave through. And so that would be my-
Okay, here, Bob, here's, here's the problem. The minute we close the street, now we're responsible to make sure that there's not more than five hundred people gathering on that street. So I think what we need to do is to encourage people to trick-or-treat in other places in the town. We will certainly going to have to monitor what goes on on Old Toe. Because what I'm hearing is that people want to walk around and do it in the, quote, "the old-fashioned" way. So, and if it gets too crowded on Old Toe, you know, we're gonna have to ask the police to friend, in a, in a friendly fashion, get people to disperse. You know, you're not supposed to have a gathering of more than five hundred people. So we close the road, well, we, we, then we have to monitor it to make sure that we don't have five hundred people on the road. So I think it's-
Paul, can we-
If we encourage people to not go there, and the signs that Deanna was referring to is, is, is part of it, I, I also had someone send to me, there's a Halloween app where people can register their houses on, and people can see where those houses, where they want to walk to. I'm not sure we want to go that far because it might take away from the, the newcomers. And the newcomer sign, Deanna, and that's what I talked to Christine about, is two-sided. One side says, I forget, Bob, you sent it to us, right?
I know. Bob, Bob sends what they were doing, I think, in Clark, but that's what, exactly what they were thinking of doing, Bob. Which was one sign was trick-or-treating, and the other sign said, "out of candy."
Okay, well, anyway, so, and that, like, if you want to go out trick-or-treating, then you could turn the sign around. If you want to go, have people come to your house, then you put this, turn the sign around and welcome people to your house, you know?
I mean, I, that's fine, I mean, we don't gotta beat this to death. If that's the case, that's the case, that's fine. I'm just, you know, my concern was only for the safety, you know, on Old Toe, but you know, I'm, I'm fine with that, that's fine.
I have a question. Being that it's COVID and it's a different year, can we set a time limit? Like, after a certain hour, you don't want the kids out trick-or-treating? Is, it, because it's a Saturday? Or is that asking too much?
I, I think that, I, I think that has to, if, if, if we get the protocols out right now and go through them, okay? So we, there's a lot of things that these guidelines cover. So I, I, I think we maybe want to put a time on it, but you know, what are we gonna do, arrest kids if they're out after six o'clock?
Yeah, I don't think-
No, I don't mean like that, just, you know, basically, just don't answer the tour anymore, you know?
Is daylight savings before or after Halloween? Does anyone know?
After.
After.
After, okay, so then, you know, twelve to six, I think, would be, you know, that, that's something that we would encourage, people do it from twelve to six. It is a Saturday, hopefully-
No, 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 I don't think, I don't think we get involved in that timeframe, to be honest with you. Because people aren't gonna listen with you.
We can recommend twelve to six, Bob. I think that that's not, that's something that we should do. Right? So i- i- if we, if we start with the, I guess the first email from Glenn has to do, is from, based upon Megan Avalon's suggestion, and I guess there's some other policy in Bloomfield that was cut and pasted, and recommendations from the, the, the governor, the governor's office. So everybody have that handy? I think it went out yesterday, today at nine fifteen is when I got it. Actually, nine oh seven, Glenn sent it out.
Please just give everybody an idea of what's going on in other places. There's good suggestions, we can certainly advertise this on our social media.
All right, well, if everyone has it-
It's not only the trick-or-treaters themselves, but the people that are giving out the candy to make it safer.
So i- i- the first thing it says, in, in place of placing treats in bags, the candy should be arranged, arranged in a way so that they can be accessed but can't be touched multiple times. And I, and I think what they're talking about is they don't want people putting balls of candy at the, at the end of their driveway where every kid's gonna stick his hand in and pick out candy. I think they're, they're talking more as if you have a table, you could put some candy out on the table, that's, and then people can just take a piece off the table when it runs out, whoever's house it is can come and, and, and replenish it. I think we probably also, people that are, the next thing is those distributing candy should have treats individually packed so trick-or-treaters can grab and go with no shared bowls. We just talked about that. Trick-or-treaters and those distributing candy need to wear a mask. I see in a lot of places, they're saying a lot of the Halloween masks are, are not sufficient. So I think that's really common sense that people should wear a mask. I also think people might want to consider wearing gloves, especially people that are handing out candy. So we might want to add to that one that the people trick-or-treating or distributing candy need to wear masks, and if they would like, they should also wear, put gloves on. This says groups should be limited to household members. I, I think that is something that is a good suggestion, but, you know, kids are kids, and they're gonna want to trick-or-treat with their kids. They're not gonna just want to stay with the family. So we might want to put, groups should be limited to household members and friends, and maybe want to put a number on it, not to exceed like six people. Okay? That should be plenty for kids to get together and, and to trick-or-treat. We go to the next page, you know, groups should stay local. We certainly want to encourage people in our town to stay local. Trick-or-treaters should limit the number of houses on their route. I think that's a, we, we can certainly put out that guideline, but that's a matter of what their parents are going to do, and it's a matter of common sense. A lot of these guidelines, no matter what we say, it's gonna be up to the individual parents, and we're hoping in this age of COVID, people are gonna use, you know, common sense. You know, handing out candy, they say, is not recommended. I think for the reason that we, you know, they want, that's why they want you to put it on a table, and put it somewhere where the kids can, you know, just pick it off the table and, and put it in your, in your- Yeah.
Is it realistic to believe that if we, if we do it this way, the way you're not, not closing Old Toe Road by having people go door to door, that people are gonna follow all these guidelines?
I think that we're gonna put the guidelines out there, and we're gonna hope that people and the, the parents have the common sense to follow them, yes. Okay, we want, we want to depend on people having common sense.
But if you did it at Old Toe Road, you could make sure that those guidelines were followed.
And then we have to, then we, so you, why, there's too many people.
No, but you-
We only have four hundred people on Old Toe at one time, because you figure the people giving out the candy, there's probably a hundred of them. So how are we gonna regulate four hundred people? You want the police there counting?
No, 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 what you could do is we could have it where people get a, a ticket to go, to go to the event beforehand.
Come on, man, it's too many.
Parents, listen, listen, we're gonna put out the guidelines. We're hoping that parents are going to have common sense and follow them, and if the crowd gets too big on Old Toe, then we're gonna have to have the police monitoring, yes. Okay, so I, 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 I don't think we want, I don't think-
We still come back to the same problem, though. What are the police gonna do if the crowd gets too big?
Send them to your house.
Then they'll, then they'll stop them from going on Old Toe. They're saying, the crowd's too big, we're stopping you, you can't go on Old Toe, go someplace else. And there's plenty of other places for kids to go, okay?
And let's remember that-
It's gonna take, we have to have cops there saying, you can't go there because it's too crowded. Then if that's what happens, and that's what we'll do. Hopefully, parents have common sense, and we won't need to do that.
But, but, you're gonna have cars driving back and up and down streets. I, I don't, I don't see how this is any-
We have cars driving on all the other streets that people are trick-or-treating on.
Yes, and Renee, there's a lot of homes on Old Toe that don't want to be part of this, that you have to consider as well. Go back to traditional trick-or-treating.
At least for this year.
And let's remember that the schools are open, the kids are in school five days, thankfully, and I would not want to risk that with a, with a large event, you know, on, on Old Toe. That's what I've heard from some of the parents, though.
I, I, I think it's, I, I get back to the whole notion of parents having common sense. And this year is different than other years, and I, I can tell you, you know, based upon what Jim Debbie told me, probably only half the people that are normally out there are gonna be out there on Old Toe.
Do we want to encourage people to put signs out, or are they only gonna have to get these signs through the newcomers' club? Or if, if somebody doesn't want to participate, should we encourage these homeowners now during this meeting to put a sign out on their door saying, "sorry, you know, not this year, see you next year," so the kids don't, you know, walk up to the home or stand there and ring the bell, you know, half a dozen times or pound on the door, and then not have it answered? I mean, I think-
Why don't you have it where it's just the houses that have the signs are only, are the only houses you trick-or-treat at? If the house doesn't have a sign, you don't go to that house.
No, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna follow those rules.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if your lights are off, if your light's off, yeah.
It's during the day.
It's during the day, it's Saturday during the day.
Well, I just heard it was gonna go on longer.
I mean, I can't, because I can't imagine putting a table out in my driveway with candy on it and having to stand there and monitor it because, you know, one or two kids are gonna wipe out the table.
Well, that's what you gotta do anyway. If you were giving it out, that's what you'd be doing, so-
Yeah, but you're handing it out instead of one kid going and taking it all.
I'm sure you're gonna have a, a way to stop that at your house, Turner.
That's right, there's no candy, no candy at my house.
Look, we can't solve all the problems. People have to have common sense and realize that this is a different year, okay? So we can only do things that will encourage people to, you know, not in, in mass, to always, to have to take some steps to stop it. And I mean, I'll, I'll talk to Joe exactly about what he thinks he can do or should do under those circumstances. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we could set out the guidelines like we have here, you know, and we, we gotta hope people follow them. I think we gotta encourage people to, to buy the signs from the-
Newcomers.
From the newcomers, you know? And like I said, they flip. If one side says you don't want it, the other side says you do. So one sign, you know, fits all. You don't want it, you get the sign, you put it out there, you know? And if you, if you don't want to buy the sign and you don't want to participate, then you have to come up with your own solution. I mean, you know, put the tape out on your porch, and don't let people come on your porch. You know, get that caution tape, you know? If that's what it's gonna take to keep people that are out of your, on your porch for people that don't want to participate, and that's what they should do. You know, we can't, we can't do everything for everyone. We can only put out, we can only put out the guidelines, okay? Give people the tools to be able to, you know, follow these guidelines, and so be it.
I agree.
Exactly. Be done with it.
Yep.
All right, so I think we maybe want to, and Deanna, since you've already had contact with Christine-
I'll reach out to her.
Yeah, and we can put, you know, post something on whatever, Facebook, whatever we have, a website, to try to promote them, make sure they have information on how you purchase the signs, and, you know, that they're, I'm assuming they're either gonna be delivered or they gotta be picked up somewhere. Just make sure they have all that information in there. And I think the app, the, the guidelines that we, you know, just, that I just went through, we should post them. This is what we, this is what we recommend, you know?
We will.
All right, I mean, so hopefully, and I, and I, I'm sorry I harp on this, common sense has to rule here, you know? I know not everybody has it, but we, we, now more than ever, we need to try and, and, and do what is safe for the kids, do what is safe for the people giving out the candy. Everybody's gotta try and do things so we stay safe. You know, we had a little uptick last month of- You know, we had a little uptick last month of cases, I certainly don't want to have another uptick, because, you know, people don't want to follow what the, you know, what the protocols are. I'm also going to.
But, but Paul, it seems like these, all these guidelines are very confusing. I just don't see how this is any safer, to be honest with you.
Well, maybe you're one of the ones that doesn't have common sense then, Renee, because, quite frankly, I'm reading the guidelines, they're not confusing to me, so I'm not sure what's confusing about them.
Renee, it's not your risk.
You have to control your children and not let them run crazy because of COVID, or else you're gonna risk them getting it. So, it's for your own, kids' own protection to follow some of these, you know, guidelines. So, I, you know, I don't know, guys, I think it's pretty simple.
I think it's fine, I think that's a great plan.
Okay, and now, I'm tired of saying this and reading this, but I'm gonna say it again. Now more than ever, we need to continue our efforts to stop the spread of this deadly virus. I urge all Mountainside residents to cooperate in order to protect themselves, our family, and our community. Please, use common sense. It is extremely important that we continue to practice social distancing and wear a mask or other face coverings when you are in public, even when you're having fun on Halloween, okay? This is not a suggestion, it is each resident's civic duty to promote social distancing and wear a mask, even on Halloween, okay? This crisis is not over, and we must continue to battle this terrible disease. Please, try to remain calm, I am confident that we can get through this, but only if we work together and each do our part, especially if we wear masks and maintain proper social distancing. We must continue to be strong, be safe, and not let our guard down. Again, wear a mask when you go out, even if you feel healthy. This will stop the spread to others who are most vulnerable. It is everyone's community duty to maintain social distancing to stop the spread. Mountainside will win this battle. These practices will save lives, but only if everyone, young and old, adhere to them. And, you know, and I'll even quote Governor Murphy, "Halloween, it's more than just a fun activity, but a real tradition. We need to make, ensure that everyone does it safely." Okay? And that's the message I hope that we're sending out. So, Glenn, you'll put together these guidelines, you know, and let's post them out there, and let's hope for the best, okay? We don't want an uptick just because people want to trick-or-treat in a fashion that is not safe for everyone.
Will do, Mayor.
Okay, so, I guess at this point, we need to pay bills. I think that would be, that's you.
It resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountainside, that the following bills of the person's name and for the amount stated below have been duly audited and found to be correct the sixth day of October 2020. The same be paid after council's review, if and when funds are available, and that the mayor, council president, administrator, and treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to sign and deliver warrants for same, and that is in the amount of $186,916.87.
Okay, we got a motion to pay the bills, we have a second.
Thank you.
Call the council, please.
Councilwoman Andre.
You're muted, Deanna.
Muted, Deanna.
Councilman Dirkis?
Yes.
Councilman Messler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Okay, so, reminder invocation, the next meeting is October 20th, the invocation is, Donna is gonna do that. We also have a proclamation, oh, my favorite one, Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 30th, 2020. Does anyone have any council comments?
Mayor, just, we just want to remind everybody that October 17th, we're gonna have Clean Communities Day, you can pick up a bag and sign up in gloves that, the DPW area next to the First Aid Squad, from 9 till 1, Matt, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then also, on that same day, in the front parking lot there, right along the Providence Road, there'll be an electronics recycling event, so you can drop off any old outdated or broken electronics, you have, you know, TVs, computers, screens, iPhones, anything pretty much electronic. We'll post that again, what they'll take, but that's gonna be the same day, October 17th, so.
Okay, anyone else? Rachel, you want to just remind everybody when we're gonna open that time capsule?
Sure, the time capsule's gonna be opened on Thursday, October 22nd, weather permitting. It will be over at Constitution Plaza. If we have to move it, we will make the announcement on Facebook. Residents, community groups, everyone is welcome to come. I've been reaching out to some to invite them personally to come. If you'd like to come, you could contact myself or Councilwoman Andre, and we will keep a list of interested people who want to come.
And just give them a little background on what we're actually opening up, Rachel, I know you know.
Yes, it's a time capsule from 1995. It contains a variety of interesting items, and we would like to fill this time capsule with items from 2020, and there's currently a bin placed in the Borough Hall vestibule, where any resident or community group is welcome to place an item that we will then put in the 2020 time capsule, and we will bury that in an appropriate place, which is still to be determined, and residents and community groups have until December 1st to place their items in Borough Hall.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yes.
Any other comments?
No.
I'm getting quite a few questions about voting. I guess the biggest question that I get is, where can I do an in-person vote this year? And I tell people, you're not going to be able to do that, there's gonna be no polling machines that are gonna be located in any of the polling districts in Mountainside. If you want to go the day of Election Day and go to the polling places, I believe there'll be two designated in Mountainside, you will have to fill out a provisional ballot, okay? Which is only going, only will be counted if the margins are such that they need to be counted. Also, so, everyone at this point that's a registered voter should have gotten a ballot for the general election. If you're a registered voter and you did not get one, okay, you can contact Glenn at Borough Hall, and he will find out why you did not receive it, okay? It's also important that you, when you either, when you mail in or drop off your ballot, that you drop off the ballot for the general election. I got a notification, as I think a lot of people did, some voters are sending in primary ballot, thinking that it's for the general election, and if you do that, that vote will not be counted, okay? Also, there is a drop box at Trailside Museum, okay? That's one of the best ways to make sure that your vote is counted. When you do fill out your ballot, you have to make sure that you sign it, and you need to try to sign it, you know, the way you've signed either your driver's license or the way you've signed the voter registration in the past, because someone will actually check to see if your signature is the same. Some ballots were thrown out last year because they didn't think the signature matched what was either on your license or in the voter registration book. And if you want to be absolutely sure that your vote is going to be counted, you can bring it to Westfield, to the Board of Elections in Westfield, and when you hand in your ballot, they're gonna ask for ID. And the reason they're doing that is they want to make sure that the person who's handing in the ballot is, is, is got a valid ID, okay? And those ballots, they won't have to check the signatures because they check your ID. So, that's by the absolute surest way that your vote will be, will be counted, okay?
Paul, can I say something?
Absolutely, Martha.
One of the changes that they made from the primary versus the general election is that they're allowing residents, if they don't feel comfortable mailing out their ballots via US Postal Service, or they don't feel comfortable putting it in the ballot boxes that are throughout Union County, ours happens to be in Trailside Museum, they have the option of going to one of the designated polling places on Election Day with their mail-in ballot, sealed, ready to go, and they can drop it off that day at one of the polling places. The only thing is that they have to know what district they're in, because Beechwood School has a certain amount of districts, and Deerfield School has different districts as well. So, I have some residents that have called to see what district they belong to, and I've directed them to what location they can go the day of the elections. Also, another thing is that the machines, there will be machines at the polling places, but only disabled residents will be able to use those machines. No one else can use the machine. So, the only way you can bring a vote in is handing in your mail-in ballot that day, or, I also had a case where someone threw out their ballot that they'd just received, and they want to be able to vote, so I told them, they need to go to the polling location and fill out a provisional ballot on the election day. So, those are a couple of ways that people can submit their votes.
Okay, great.
Thank you for that clarification, Martha, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the voters do. And if you have any questions, you can certainly contact Martha at Borough Hall to make sure that your vote is counted, and we know everyone wants their vote to be counted.
And it's Martha, the Borough Clerk, and Glenn Mortimer, who's the administrator, so, if you call the phone number, that's who you're asking for.
Yes.
Also, one thing on the provisional ballots, Mayor, you said they wouldn't be counted unless the election was closed. All provisional ballots will be counted. The only way they won't be counted is if another ballot has already been processed with your name on it.
Thank you for that clarification, Glenn, I appreciate it. Okay, so, anybody else have any comments? Okay, so, at this time, are there any questions from the public?
There was one, and I think Matt can share that with us.
Yes, we're on a 22-second delay, and one comment that was made was from Sarah Post, and she said, "We need to do something to improve the noise ordinance every day to something else, even if just on weekends," and that's all.
Okay, so, John's office is gonna take a look at that, and then he's gonna send that to us, for us to chime in on whatever changes or comments he has, and then that'll go to the Board of Health for them to make a recommend, review it and make a recommendation to us, and then if it comes back with their recommendation, then at that point, we can vote on it as an ordinance.
Yes, and Mayor, the next Board of Health meeting is on October 19th.
Any other questions? We're on a 22-second delay, you say, Matt?
That's right, and at the moment, we've passed the 22-second mark, and I see no further questions or comments.
All right, let's just give it a little more time, this is. Okay, so, at this time, we're going to go into executive session, so, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey permits the public to be excluded from certain matters to be discussed by the governing body, and whereas the mayor and council desire to discuss litigation, contracts, and personnel, which are matters where the exclusion of the public is permitted, whereas the public disclosure of the results of this discussion will be made as soon as the matters discussed have been resolved by the governing body of the Borough of Mountainside, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountainside, that the aforementioned matters shall be discussed in closed session upon adoption of this resolution, and I believe it's mainly contracts tonight, it may be personnel. Okay, so, we need a motion to go into exec. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, we're gonna be going into executive, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll meet.
Thank you.
Okay?